Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today's January 9th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. Lots of stuff on the agenda today, so we're gonna get started. First of all, I please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge. If you'll follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you much. So at this time, we're going to do swearing in, swearing out, swearing up and down, and I'm gonna go first. The way this process will work is I swear in the magistrate judge, and then he swears in everyone else. Okay, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Adam Dingeldine.
I, Adam Dingeldine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho. And that I will perform the duties of magistrate judge. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right, Commissioner Moppen, come on down. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Sherry Moppen.
I, Sherry Moppen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
That I will perform the duties of county commissioner.
That I will perform the duties of county commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Neil Thompson.
I, Neil Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of county commissioner.
I will perform the duties of county commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ms. Leaper. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand. I, Sue Leaper.
I, Sue Leaper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of assessor.
I will perform the duties of assessor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Miller. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me.
I, Douglas A. Miller.
I, Douglas A. Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of county clerk.
And that I will do the duties of county clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You should've. You can add it now. Make him raise his hand again.
Hi, Joanna DeFort.
Hi, Joanna DeFort.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of treasurer.
And that I will perform the duties of treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Carver.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand. I, Scott G. Carver.
I, Scott G. Carver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of coroner.
And that I will perform the duties of coroner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, typically, the clerk would do the oath of ceremony for the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, but since we have the judge here, I thought the judge would be able to do it as well.
All right, John.
Lily Hogg.
Yes.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, John Lily Hogg.
Hi, John Lily Hogg.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho. And that I will perform the duties of Valley Soil and Water Conservation District trustee.
Perform the duties of Valley County Soil and Water Trustee.
To the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Last but not least. Bill Leaf.
Save the best for last.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bill Leaf.
I, Billy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The laws of the Constitution of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of.
I will perform the duties of.
Valley Soil and Water Conservation District trustee.
Valley Soil and Water District Supervisor trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So thanks, Judge, for swearing everybody in. I think that it's kind of nice to be in a position not to be swore at once in my life, and this is probably one of the few days. But I'm looking forward and congratulate all of our new officers and folks in this system, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody. And that concludes our ceremony, and we'll move on down to our agenda item. Let's take about a five-minute break in case anybody, give everybody a chance to shake hands and congratulate. To Mr. Neil Thompson, appreciation of two years of dedicated service to the citizens of Valley County for Valley County Plan and Zoney. There you go.
He already has white hair. What's gonna change?
No, that was from our daughter. From all of our kids, believe me.
Yes, the kids.
My kids are right.
There you go. Great.
We'll do it.
Yeah, that's another day.
I'll see. I'll be back in a little while.
It's in Nicole's, yeah. She got there just in.
Congratulations. Okay, folks, we're gonna keep on going with our day. We got a lot on their agenda, so our next agenda item is an action item, and this is the selected chair for this year. At this time, I'll open the agenda for nominations.
Good move that we have you stay in place unless you don't want to do it.
Moved in second. Well, we'll go one more year and see how it goes. Eleven years now. So if we got a motion, if I got a little favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Mr.
Thank you. You always hear when you do a bad job, and very seldom when you hear a good one, so I appreciate that. It means a lot. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. These are claims, and board order claims, and I think we had two junior college?
Yep. I had one question, Rita. Need to get to it really quick. It was a question on a PILT payment, and whether that was out of the correct fund or not. So Tyler Technologies, we paid 637 out of PILT. I thought all that was budgeted.
All of the titles, excuse me, all of the Tyler conversion, Commissioner Moppen, all of that was going to be expended out of PILT?
Oh, it is.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I don't remember that. I thought it was in budget.
And Neil, you don't have a computer, so you don't have a list of these, so I'm gonna start training right off. Basically, you're gonna get an email from Rita, claim the list. This is the junior college. Uh huh. Keeps the kid, and where they're gonna go. Our thing to watch for is make sure that their address is verified. Two of those, and then you have totals, which is like a summation of each fund. And then if you really wanna get deep into it, you can look. If you wanna look at that one, you can go ahead. We are not a big rush.
I have a hard copy if it's easier to look at.
Yeah. Hard copy I can look at. If you have one.
Yeah, I have one in my hand. I just need that page back.
Yeah, keep that signature page. And if there's anything you need a question on, please feel free to ask. There's no dumb questions up here.
When we take a break here in a little while, I'll run him up to IT. They've got an iPad up there for him. He just has to sign in. And then he'll have something for this afternoon.
Um, you were talking about PILTS. Let me get to that.
So the Tyler conversion, then, that's all coming out of PILT?
The cost, not the maintenance. The maintenance we budgeted for, but the equipment, software.
Is that about a hundred thousand?
That's correct.
And my question's more to our new assessor. Sure, are we about done with the files?
Yes, I think we're going to have one last bill.
One more?
Um, and then we should be complete.
Then normally, you and I will go back and forth and make motions to approve. You actually have your agenda. You'll have an agenda there. So once you get ready, then you can either go ahead and move to approve. The claim, or the board order claims, or I can do it this time.
I'll just follow you for the first time out here.
But you tell me when you're ready.
So just for the general public, we spent about $263,000 this two-week pay period from different various budgets. So if there's no more questions, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the claims, the board order claims, and two junior college tuition.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Move to second, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You can take notes in different ways. I use the PDF version of a correction up here, so when you get it, that's why I use a computer and not an iPad, because I can make comments on.
Junior college.
I use my phone at times to take notes, so I have it available to me.
Oh, they're both here, sorry.
Some things we all free sign, and some things just require elk signatures. They're coming out of our specific budget and key streams, anything that's a board order claim we pay for. I can get those back. Which is hired recreation deputies outfitting them. This is a company that is working on broadband for us.
You sharing them?
Rita, here's your clip if you want it back.
This is one of the final bills.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you approved the agenda, too, so.
Oh, shoot, you're right, Doug. Good catch. Do that next.
That's the end of that.
So I have to go back and kind of start over. I forgot to get the agenda approved today, so I need a motion to approve that.
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for Monday, March 9th.
Second. Move to second, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move right on down. We're only a few minutes late. We're into an elect official's report, and the first one up is Sue. Good morning.
Good morning. We continue to do, work up our reappraisal. I don't have a whole lot to report, other than we're just doing our inputting of data and what have you, so we'll be sending out egg, verifications here soon, personal property, et cetera, things of that nature.
So where are you guys on technology improvements? Are you, have we done anything with you guys yet? Are you in the middle of any conversions or anything?
Not yet.
Okay. You've got a lot of new staff to train, so.
I've been pretty busy with that, so.
When you get a chance, could you see if the state tax commissioner's come out with the levy rate ratings for all the counties?
Yep. I'll go talk.
That's kind of how I judge my job, is where we sit on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep, I'll get it for you.
Hey, any more questions for Sue?
Congratulations.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Mr. Miller? Morning, Doug.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize. I am just making sure that I have the documents that I need that are on as my action item, but just to kind of give you a brief overview of matters involving the clerk's office. Myself, an elections coordinator, Rich Robinson, did attend the elections conference last week from Tuesday and through Friday. It was a great conference. It's going to be an annual conference, and we were able to have some good conversations with our newly elected Secretary of State, Phil McGrain. As you are all aware, elections are always a hot topic, so we are trying to implement new practices that gives trust to the voters. As the Commissioners are fully aware, though, I personally feel that the state of Idaho is doing a phenomenal job with elections. I mean, we have a good handle on it, but with the selection of, or with the appointment of Phil McGrain or the voting Mr. McGrain in, it's going to bring great communication for the clerks with the Secretary of State's office, so we are excited to have Phil McGrain onboard. Other than that, Commissioners, we do have two courts today. We have magistrate and district court taking place, so we do have a busy court for today. We are also, as the Commissioners are fully aware, we're working on transitioning to a new financial software. We are having bi-weekly meetings with Tyler Technologies to begin that conversion, so we are excited about that, but extremely busy making sure that they have all of their data. And we're also working on a new recording technology, so not only our financial, new financial software, we're also getting new recording software, so we're excited about that. Commissioners, really, that's all I have at this point in time, and I'll stand for any questions.
Doug, the new technology, is it gonna flow with the auditor pretty quick? I mean, it used to be Jason, but now it's just, I can't think of his name, Zwigard. They're aware that we got new.
They are aware, but this is probably not gonna impact their audit for this fiscal year, but definitely it's gonna impact for the upcoming years. We will not be going live with the new software until January of 2024.
Oh, okay.
So really.
He's still under the old system.
Correct. All of the audit that will be conducted this fiscal year will be from our existing software that we have.
Well, as long as we notify them that we're making a change, so they can make a change.
Yes, sir. And then I do have an action item on the agenda. It's a request for $5,000 match for an off-road motor vehicle grant through the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation. I don't know if that was included in your packet or not.
We got a lot of the recreation support letters, but I don't remember seeing this. Wait a minute, I do remember.
There was something.
Somewhere.
River Creek OHV parking lot. Reimbursement Close South. Some of the titling on some of these are interesting to follow. Some of the titling on some of these are interesting to follow.
I know I've seen this, but I'm not sure where it is. What are you thinking here, Doug, out of Piltz or Harp or what?
Warming hut repair.
What are you thinking? For the five thousand?
We have a grant line specifically for these type of recreation grants. We would take it out of that recreation grant line.
Yeah, I can't find it right now.
We definitely have the warming hut repair.
Yeah, we have that one.
Yeah, and I don't see that other one is what my concern is, Commissioner Mopin and all Commissioners.
So the off-road meal.
And I was asked to present it, I think on behalf of McKenzie, and I just.
And what, what will the funds be used for? What are we, what are they requesting the grant for? Or matching funds? I want an off-road vehicle. Do you want an off-road vehicle?
I have about four of them.
Oh, I want one.
One of them works really well. It started this morning anyway. Will feed cows. I know I've seen that, but I don't know where it went.
Is anyone from the recreation department?
There's four of them from recreation too. Art and Brush Creek.
Oh, where is it? Here's Ro Wellington, but I don't see the other one.
There's a campground mower. So I just don't know what they're actually.
So Doug, do you know what this grant is for? It's not a machine.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I don't. It was added late and.
There he is.
Oh, good, Larry, come on up to Mike, please. We have a request for five thousand match funds for an off-road vehicle grant. Can you tell us a little bit about that grant?
So what you, we're talking Clear Creek right now?
No, it's a match for off-road motor vehicle grant through Parks and Rec, five thousand.
I have not seen anything that Idaho Park and Rec wanted.
I think it came from McKenzie, if I remember right.
Well, if it came from McKenzie, it was a match for the Clear Creek.
Okay, and we do have that.
Yeah.
For Clear Creek.
Mm-hmm.
They just got misquoted on that.
Yeah, I apologize, Commissioners, I don't see.
Yeah, I thought McKenzie was gonna present that, but that's fine.
So we have a total cost and this, so it's for rough grading this year, a vaulted toilet.
Yes.
So the total cost for the whole project is a hundred and one thousand eight seventy-one. Total matching is sixteen thousand. And we've got enough other than the five thousand. I am very happy to support your efforts.
Yeah, we've got, we've got everything else. You guys approved it in budget.
Here it is.
The sixteen thousand, it is, it is in our budget. It's just that everything we touch seems to go up pretty fast.
This is really for a vaulted toilet.
Yes.
We are trying to.
Which is, uh, total cost is sixty thousand. We're gonna match five and the rest is gonna come from Parks and Rec for fifty-five thousand.
Correct.
Put in power and water and everything eventually. But the rough grade this next year, this is how much they're gonna do for this next year. So a rough grade in the vaulted toilet. So they have everything except for five thousand.
So you're just needing five thousand from us?
Yep. Mr. Chairman.
Doug says we have a grant line for that, so I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a five thousand dollar matching funds for the Clear Creek OHV parking site through the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec.
Second that.
Who'd a second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And then we also, Larry, you've got a one for the Wellington roof on here too. So anything we need to know about that one? That one's just.
That's the very last one in here.
Okay, so that's just a reimbursement. There was a balance left on that at two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three. We're not going to need those funds, is that correct? So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the reimbursement grants to complete the Wellington warming hut repairs.
Second it.
So this is that grant. It originally put in there for thirty-four thousand eight oh four. They spent thirty-one eight forty replacing that roof. So there's actually a balance, but I don't need it.
Yeah, we got a motion in the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So actually, we're just requesting, they gave us the, or they gave us a grant to go to work out in eight oh four. We didn't need all of it, but we had to do the work upfront, so we're requesting reimbursement and pay us back for the upfront costs.
And the only thing I could add to this, Larry, is to thank all those guys down there that helped with that. Local clubs and I know there was a lot of free labor and a lot of work on that.
There was a lot of people that worked on it, including you guys worked on it. This has been almost a six-year project. And I'm real pleased. I'm gonna take pictures and get it out on the, on Facebook and everything, but I just thank you guys so much for the help on that one too. And the club put a lot of labor into it. Thanks again.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything else you want to report on?
Mr. Chairman, I do not, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to our list. The next one is Brian Nogo. Good morning.
Good morning, all. The, in the prosecutor's office, we're clipping right along. We've seen kind of a, an uptick over the last month or two. Been quite a few felony cases, so we've got a, a pretty busy prelim and district court calendar over the next couple of months. So it's kind of a busy holiday season, unfortunately. We do have, I, I, a friend of mine from the University of Idaho, Katie Ball, runs their externship program, called me a couple of months ago and said, hey, we've got a, an extern that wants to come work for you for a semester. It doesn't cost us anything. The, this extern is gonna be working for school credit. So Oak and I will supervise, Arnold Hamari is his name, Arnie. And Arnie is a retired military. I think he's retired out of the Army. All right. And he is gonna work for us for this next semester. He actually starts today. And so you'll probably see his name on some things. He's gonna be doing some research primarily, working on some, you know, longer range projects for Oak, but maybe helping us out a little bit, maybe in traffic court and things on the, on the criminal side as well. But we're excited to have him and we'll, we'll put him to work and get some use out of him. Other than that, there's not a whole lot to report. Things are, are busy. The new building is, is working out great. We're still trying to figure out the, the internet service over there. We're right now trying to decide between, and I don't, I don't know all the right vocab to use, but we're, we're trying to figure out whether to kind of patch in with the road department over there or whether we need to run a news, new line with Zipley and, and patchy and across the highway there and have a dedicated line. The current service through Sparklight isn't working that great. We have a hard time, just because the, the volume with, I think what, what killed us was, was not just the, the service that we need in the internet service for our computers, but adding the phones. We didn't have the VoIP phones before, but we installed the VoIP phones when we moved over there and those are web, web-based. And so with, with the addition of the phones and the computers, I think it was just, it's just a little much for standard Sparklight service. So we're working with Jeremy to get that kind of fixed and squared away. But I'm happy to report that by the end of the week, we should have a functioning conference table in our conference room. So we'll be able to have meetings and we're excited about that. We expect to have our first meeting there with the MDT next week. So we're, we're excited about that and the space is working great for us. So with that, any questions?
Brian, I'm assuming the two, two court hearings today are not with, with juries?
Right. The arraignments today are.
Their arraignments?
Yeah, they're just, they're just arraignments. They won't, won't be, no jury trials today. It looks like we'll probably have a jury trial next, next week or the week after. We have a misdemeanor trial, DUI trial. Looks like it'll go. Ashley will be handling that one, but that's what we expect right now, anyway.
Okay. Any more questions for Brian?
I have a phone, Mr. Fisher. You said Sparklight. Is Sparklight like DSL, is that the landline through, used to be Frontier?
Yeah, it, it is a, I think it is a DSL network. I'm not sure if it's fiber or not, but.
What is Sparklight?
It was Cable One.
It's okay.
Yeah, it used to be Cable One. And now it's, it's just one of the providers that we have over in that building. We, when we first moved into the building, we thought, well, maybe we can, we can get by with, you know, Sparklight is, they have a bunch of different options and we, we thought, well, if we go with like the, the best possible option for like a, you know, home network type of setup, would that be enough, you know? And it just turns out it hasn't been. We need a, we need a dedicated fiber optic line. And Zipley can provide that. It's just taking some time, because we gotta, we gotta run the line under the highway across the street is where we patch into it. And so we gotta get a, an approval from ITD. I actually just got an email from Jeremy this morning that ITD granted the, the permit for it. And so we should be able to get it done in the next month or so. But we need to talk a little more with Jeremy about whether that's gonna be any more feasible than, than just patching into what we already have at the road department there, so.
Is anybody, I can't remember what it, satellite we use, it's that Elon Musk one?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Starlink?
Starlink, yeah.
I don't know if Starlink is set up to do commercial.
Yeah.
We've had Jeremy look into it.
They're great for home, but I don't know how they work for commercial.
Yeah, I don't know that, that it would work for commercial. At least Jeremy didn't think it would, but we did, I did ask about that, because I have that at home too and.
Yeah, me too.
It works great, but I don't know that it would be enough for what we're, what we're doing here. It takes a lot of bandwidth, because we're, we're patching into the, to the network here. And so it's just, you know, there's a lot of, lot of data moving back and forth.
Okay, just a question.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Well, and I think the last time that we talked to Jeremy about it, they had to drill underneath the highway to get it from across the highway, which would be a few months out.
Well, they think they can.
I brought up the idea, we just sent it into the road department, why don't we just extend it down?
Yeah.
Through our property to that facility, so he was gonna look at it.
Right. Yeah, as long as we can, we gotta, there's some kind of a little dish or something we gotta put on the building or near the building. And so we gotta make sure that that's gonna be okay with, with Amerititle and all that first. So few, few Ts to cross and Is to dot there, but we're, we're getting close.
We have a dedicated network for the entire campus. We're trying to get it also into Lake Fork, so the Park and Rec can move up to Lake Fork. And it takes a lot of time and energy to work with the providers around here to get us one.
It does.
We never get into the network, because we are out and we, we just can't get in the secure network. It's a security issue.
And I think the last time we looked at Lake Fork, it was about seven hundred a month. So we kind of wanted to rethink that one.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money for internet.
Spendy for sure.
Okay, Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on down. Our next victim is the sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. It was a busy weekend, had several crashes, a two-wheel crash on the S fridge. I think that was due to icy conditions and had a rescue of a snow bike injured person up near Box Lake down in Canyon area. So Two Bear Air finally was able to.
Oh, my gosh.
And assist in that, as well as our deputies in search of rescue.
It was like a fun weekend.
Yep.
Our deputies have worked out really well both weekends in a row.
Yeah, to have extra out there to do that, so.
Okay, any more questions for the sheriff? All right. Thank you, have a great day. Uh, treasurer? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're back to the routine schedule in the treasurer's office, less long hours and collecting tax dollars. But we did wrap up the December month and get tax turnover completed. We have an extra week to complete that in the month of January, so the clerk's office will be working on processing that over the next couple of weeks. I pulled the first list for tax deed, which this year we are collecting or trying to collect the final taxes for the 2019 tax year. And there were seventy-one parcels that popped up on the list, which is twenty-six less than last year. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that list whittled down quickly, but I'll keep you updated on the progress of that throughout, throughout the next couple of months. Other than that, I don't have anything else specific to update on.
How much, what percentage of our income did we collect in taxes?
Uh, so for the 2022 tax year, we levied thirty-seven million and we collected just over twenty-three million. I did not run the percentages, but you could, we do that really quick, over half, which is typical.
Oh, yeah.
We collected about twenty-four million in the month of December, but some of that was from previous tax years as well.
We levied thirty-seven, I'm sorry, how much did we collect?
We collected twenty-three of the 2022 tax year. And I believe, I looked at it right this morning, but I was also distracted. I believe five million of that is Valley Counties that we get to keep of the, the twenty-four million collected.
That's about where we normally hit, sixty-seven, I think, the last time. Kind of shows you how the economy's doing.
It does. It'll be interesting to see how it goes next year.
Any questions for Johanna?
All right.
Okay, thank you, have a great day. We're gonna move on into department heads. The first one, Annette sent us a year-end summary. Oh, you're here. Oh, good, 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 good. Thanks, come on up.
Just gonna give this to you since I sent it to everybody else. This is our stats over here.
All a little bit. Yeah, we just got, we got education week coming up and I think it starts the twenty-third. Me and Marshall will be gone for a couple of days for that. Tony's gonna stay in the office this year. We've been doing scanning and we have our statistics. We're not super busy, so.
Where's the class this year in Boise?
Yes, in Nampa.
But looking at the stats, it looks like the commercial went up and the residential went down. Four fifty-six last year and four fifty-one this year. Total permits.
The houses went down, but they're a lot bigger. We're getting a lot of big, big, you know, big houses. Otherwise, that's all I got.
Big money flowing out here. There's a lot of big money. In 2012, when I started, we had thirty-two, three-point-two million and now we're up to seventy-one-point-eight million.
Are you reviewing your fees? Are we gonna be seeing that soon?
I've started reviewing it, got some stuff from other counties and I haven't put anything together yet, though.
Ten years' time.
Well, ten years ago, it was 2012 when we were all dead, so.
Take. We were just coming out of it in twelve. Hey, any more questions for Annette? Thank you, have a good school.
Going to the school in Nevada? Did you get signed up for that?
I have not, I got till the end of January to do that, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annette.
And Skip sent in. Dee Dee is gonna handle it, that's right. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning and thank you. It was decided that I would be here on Friday and typically I ask for longer than five minutes, so forgive me if I go a little longer. And sir, it's nice to meet you. I'm Dee Dee Phillips, I'm the juvenile probation officer for the county. And sir, it's nice to meet you. I'm Dee Dee Phillips. I'm the juvenile probation officer for the county. So I've already shared with you or given you guys hard copies of kind of my year end review. This is always good to remind you kind of what's going on, at least with the juveniles in our community that I have connection with. I'll go through those really quick with you, best I can. Ask questions, of course. So just as of Saturday, Friday, when I was actually putting this together, I only had 12 cases, which is absolutely phenomenal. And I'm gonna tell you that's just because I'm inhaling. Soon as I let it all out, it's all gonna change. Of that day, five were females, seven were males. The ages were between 11 and 18, and then the demographics of where they live. I have two who are in the Department of Juvenile Corrections, two who are pending cases, one diversion, five moderates. Moderates and high mean how often I see them. That's based off of a risk scale that I do. It's based on social histories that I do for reports for court. So moderates, for example, I see a couple of times a month, while highs I will see weekly. Then I do have the two new juvenile cases coming and I do have some adult cases. As you all know, juvenile development does not stop at 18. Sometimes it goes up to 25. So sometimes the court feels that the services that I provide would be best served for 21, 22-year-olds perhaps, because they just haven't quite gotten there. So I, I give a lot more of my time, a lot more resources, a lot more services. So there's two adult cases that I do have that are DUIs. One is 16 and the other one's 21. On the last page, I note that I do pre-trial cases as well, so. And then just to see how the year looks, I had a, for diversion, and sir, what diversion is, in case you guys just don't know, in case you don't know, diversion cases are cases that the prosecuting attorney will send through me that don't have a criminal history. There's just a police report. So let's say it's a, it's a young kid or even a 16 or 17-year-old that has no criminal background. It seems to do well in school, has great parents, that kind of stuff. They may be best suited for coming through diversion, so they don't have that, that criminal record. They just have that police report. So I got nine of those new this year, closed 12, successful three. This will be the first year. You'll find that this is the first year for a lot of really bad things. But that three violations out of diversion, typically I'm a 100% success rate, but this year not so much. Had a real big struggle with drugs and alcohol, not myself, but my juveniles did. And so almost all the violations are based on, especially alcohol. Really had some struggles with alcohol this year. Probation, new cases, closed six. One was closed, only one was closed successful out of all of those. I guess my addition's wrong. It's 35. Okay, two successful. One was time terminated, which means I'm usually full of tools and lots of tools and lots of tries. Time to terminate means that I'm, I'm out of options. I have no one else to do with this juvenile. So can they just sit some time in detention and be done with it? They turn 18 typically or they're after 18 and then the adult system can just take them from there. Three transferred to Ada County. I had three cases that were up here that were a pretty big deal that all lived down the valley. So whether it be through the process or at sentencing, then they get transferred down there for supervision. Petitions, 21. That's a lot. That's a lot of new charges. In the adult world, those are like citations. The juvenile world, it's called petitions. The high, the most ones that we got, and I didn't go through every single one, but petty thefts, commercial burglaries or burglaries, possessions of drug paraphernalia, of course, and controlled substances or marijuana and possession of alcohol were the top. We had probably three different bands of kids who would go into stores and steal alcohol and leave. They were not all best friends. They all knew each other because it's a small town. That was a big deal this summer. I have been to all the establishments in McCall, talked to the folks in here in Cascade as well as Donley about how kids are doing this. There's certain alcohol beverages that are really easy to steal. There's something called a buzz ball. If you've never seen them, they're about as big as your hand and kids can just walk through because stores don't think about it, but they have huge bins. You can just grab it. It's the size of a little baseball, yeah, baseball. You can stick it in their pocket, their backpack, whichever. So it's a pretty big deal. And they have a little more alcohol content in them little things. So some of the folks did change them or hired them. Some are even talking about not even having them in their stores. So I had one young lady who ended up in the hospital twice after having those because they couldn't control. And then the rest of the list is in there. 11 probation violations. My God, that's embarrassing, but when, when you're fighting drugs and alcohol, and some of these.
A lot of the COVID lockdown, do you think that we're seeing the ramifications from that? Because I mean, a lot of the alcoholism up here is horrible now. You know, is it passing through to our youth?
I'm gonna say it's absolutely a factor, probably some other stuff. I mean, just the amount of petitions we have this year. This is the first time that all the kids were fully reintegrated into the school programs. Definitely saw a whole lot of peer awkward and connection weird and all that kind of stuff. When they get back together, they're so excited to be together. And the parents and all, I'm sure even all of us adults are happy that they're out of the house and doing stuff. They may have gotten less supervision. There's also a whole lot of mental health struggles that came out of that. So, yeah, getting back into it's pretty difficult. So, you know, those are factors.
Do you have any stats on where, I mean, when you're saying drug and alcohol, do kids ever cough up and say where they get all this?
Some, yes, absolutely. Again, a lot of them got them from stealing, from establishments. Others have, of course, there's alcohol in the house. There was a juvenile the other night, for example, that snuck into the house of another juvenile and had a root beer bottle with their parents vodka in it. You know, so it's, most of it's from just stealing, taking opportunity. I mean, gotta get it where they can find it, yeah. Not nefarious all the time in the fact that, you know, people are giving it to kids. No, they're trying to sneak it. The question. Probation, about the, down to the detentions, we had four juveniles in detention. I'm not sure if you guys knew, we had two juveniles that initially were charged with rape. Those are automatically waivable adult charges, so they don't go to the adult jail because they are underage. So they went to detention. Of course, it sucked a whole lot of funding from this county to do that, but they sat in detention. Most of those were, I think both of them actually were waived down and then brought to the juvenile system.
So do you, do we have anybody in there now? I was thinking, isn't four about the lowest we've had for quite a while?
Lowest? No, it's four kids. No, that's actually pretty high.
Six last year?
Did we?
I'm not recalling that for that high, but.
How many can we house up here?
We don't house them up here. We contract out to both Canyon County as well as Ada County. I think we've always used Ada County. Because ours is closed. We try not to.
Interesting to know where that number's going. Seems like I remember one time we had 12 one year.
I've been here eight years and I have fours the most that I've had in one year.
Four's the most, okay. I could be wrong.
It's for long term. I mean, we'll sometimes use it for like discretionary time, you know, like they sit for a weekend because they've earned it. But even then, I don't think it's been more than a handful of.
But most of these are usually what, three months? Three months, dude?
No, sir. We try, really had, juvenile justice system tries to keep kids out of detention because it's, there's just no statistics that it makes them better people. But since these were, in this case, I think actually the cases the last several years, they were, they were sexually offending cases and the risk was too substantial to keep them in our community that they stayed there until there was resolution of the charges. So, and for whatever it's worth, the reason that we don't put a time on it is because we're always trying to give them services or get them to where they need to for services. And the max penalty for a misdemeanor charge on a juvenile is only three months. It's 90 days. Felony charge is up to 180 days, so only six months. So they can sit, once they sit that much time, they're, they're done. They get no probation, nothing.
But that might be data that might come in handy down the road, the number of days of the kids in juvenile for the year.
The number of days?
Days, yeah.
I think Skip has all that because I think he has to pay for it.
And I think Doug probably has the two in the bill somewhere, but.
Yeah, that's okay. Number of days for 2020, if I can do that. Impatient treatment. I've had two juveniles go to impatient treatment. For impatient treatment, those are typically paid for by juvenile justice money. For juveniles, they usually go through impatient treatment, this for drugs and alcohol, for 90 to 120 days. For adults, it's usually a month. For juveniles, a whole lot longer because it's, it's a whole lot more to deal with. Two of them went. Neither one of them completed. Wow. One took off about a month prior to graduation, the other one a week prior. It was very sad. But that one's still doing fantastic. Doing great with recovery. Three this year were committed to the Department of Juvenile Corrections. That is an awful lot. Even when I was in Ada County, three is an awful lot for one caseload. All of them, nope, no. Two of them were for sexual offending type cases and one was a recommit. He'd been to the Department of Juvenile Corrections before, but consistently got into trouble that kind of, they had to be taken, removed from the community. Idaho Challenge Academy, I've had two successfully complete that program. I had the honor of going and providing a training to them just a couple of weeks ago. Incredible. Such an incredible place. The rest are just kind of, what do I do with my time? I'm trying to keep track of my drug tests, how many I do. So I got 80-ish. I did not keep track of how many were positive or negative. Home visits, 25. Field visits, 25. Field visits are anyplace but the home and school. 22 visits for schools, telephone, texts, emails. I think the next one, did I stick it on there? Nope. Where's my office? Oh, there's the office. 148. Because of crisis management, I like to do the crisis management, the hard conversations in my office, not in someone's home, because that's their safety. So I have a lot more in my office this year, probably than I have the last couple because it was just, there was a whole lot of crisis management this last summer. And then I have my little notes or context about how many are for juvenile versus parents, which it's really important to me to always involve the parents in anything that I do with the juveniles. So you can see that they're pretty close to the same. Incredible parents still this year. My goodness, they had to work through some hard things, but they're always open and they're always ready for any kind of guidance. They're just incredible to work with. And my other duties, when I'm not doing all this stuff, just community, I'm really proud of this very first one, always. I lose count after 30. To be able to be a person within this community that just general public calls to problem solve and talk to me about stuff, come in, Dee Dee, what can I do about this kid? I'm really proud that it's becoming a normal thing for my name to be out there, to call me, to figure out what to do or to help with or connect resources. Training's facilitated. I've done a 12-ish. Still post-academy. I listed all the places. The Guardian and Lighton, when they reached out to ask me to do a training, I was pretty, pretty proud of that. Guest speaking, have done quite a few of those. This year I was voted as the chair of the Youth Advocacy Coalition as Yak. Really proud of the last year of where that has moved into and the planet youth and how that's. If you ever want me to talk about that, I'll be another day. Vice chair, still have the Region 4 Juvenile Justice Council, board member of IJJA. That's new. That's Idaho Juvenile Justice Association. They put on a conference every single fall. Valley County Social Committee, really happy about that one. And then I have an office still at Cascade in the Teen Center where my office is. So I'm there every Tuesday, just for, again, whatever this community needs as well as what that school needs. So I did bring just, I call them treats, but it's just one of my little toys that I give to parents. That's a new thing that Skip introduced to me this, just a couple of months ago. They're single-use breathalyzers. So this is only up to 0.08 and they're not admissible in court. But if you're a parent and you're wondering if your kid is under the influence of alcohol, they can use these. I brought three. If you guys want to look at them and see them.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, come on up.
I won't judge you if you take a little bit of them. I bought a whole box of those.
Did you?
Because I want to take them to the bars and, and have them available in the bars, but I haven't had time to do it, so. I already have, so I don't.
Yes, no, they're fantastic. I've spent them everywhere. So my parents, a lot of the parents get little kits. They have those in them as well as little swabs that test for marijuana and vape pens. I'm all about excuse killing. So if they can kill an argument or an excuse in the house, then it never has to make it to me or to law enforcement. So it gives them just a few more tools to find out if their kids are under the influence or not and they can do a lot for next.
I need to talk about this because this guy keeps reaching out to me. I told him I would try and get him into the community. So how can we integrate this thought process further?
How do we, which thought?
Just.
Just those?
Buying these and putting them.
Well, I have the Youth Advocacy Coalition looking to do on them. I have reached out to the Central District Health because they have behavioral money grants and that kind of stuff to see if we can't get them. So I've checked into all of my resources to see how much we can get up here. Because there's, of course, there's gonna be money to pay for those. They're 60 bucks for a pack of 30. We get them, I'll let you guys know.
Not too bad. Dee Dee, on a lot of your report, you talk about alcohol and marijuana. Have you seen any meth or fentanyl or any of that yet?
No, I did have a girl that was tested positive for fentanyl. Probably in the last month, it came back negative when I sent it to a lab. That was the first time I even saw, ever saw that up here. In, since I'm on the Region 4 Council down in Ada, they had three kids in one month getting top priority for impatient, impatient treatment beds because their drug of choice was fentanyl. So it's coming if it's not here already. And it's, it's not just a little bit of dabbing. It's, it's full-fledged. That's what they're looking for.
But it doesn't sound like there's a lot of it here yet.
Not that's coming to my office, but I think law enforcement has seen it up here, but just not with juveniles. All right, thank you, guys.
Well, I'm really, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. I'm really impressed with all the different visits, the home visits. That's a lot of work for one person and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'm so proud you're a part of our team.
Thank you. You only get four more years. I got my retirement date.
Four more years.
That's when I'm gone too! Max!
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna move on down. Melissa, you're next. Good morning.
Welcome, Mr. Thompson. I'm just gonna read off the University of Idaho mission statement just because there's a new person in the room and sometimes I find that people don't know what extension is or what extension does. And I'm hoping to give a presentation with my staff in the next month or so. And I will get a date pinned down with Doug. So University of Idaho Extension provides reliable, research-based education and information to help people, businesses and communities solve problems, develop skills and build a better future. So a lot of the times when I'm sitting in these commissioner meetings, I can hear people kind of say, if we just had more education on that or if people knew about that. And I feel, I always listen in for those opportunities because I think, how can extension help in those areas? And so I have an office staff of two full-time county staff and one part-town county staff. And there's a 4-H coordinator that does youth development programs and has a 4-H assistant to help and support her. And then we have a full-time admin to help with all office programs. So what I've been up to is I had the annual review with Dr. Momat down in Caldwell last week. And then I had Master Gardener Winter Meeting last week. And we do those three times per year. And so we're kind of planning what kind of classes are we gonna do and what kind of learning do we want to do from here until May. So our spring kind of lineup. Other projects that I'm working on is the Cascade Arts Walk. We tried to do the winter pilot and we'll be wrapping up that project and, and trying to understand if that was successful or if we're gonna move forward. It was definitely not as successful as the summer, but I think we all anticipated that. Doing some Master Gardener planning, advanced Master Gardener planning, working on awards and conference proposals. I've been invited to do a peer review for an extension bulletin from another colleague of mine around the state. I'll be presenting at the Horticulture Conference next week down in Ada County on firewise landscapes. And then trying to pinpoint the last bike and ped count for this session. And then we won't do that again until the next five years.
Melissa, before you go past the firewise, are you on that committee? Are you on the education committee or the firewise group that?
I am not.
No? Might be a consideration.
And that's the local, the Valley County Committee?
Yes.
I know they have the Facebook group and Stephanie at her, is that the right name?
There's a full fireworking group that actually is meeting either this week or next week. I can't remember. There's an education committee on firewise and a lot of that is landscaping and, you know, how do we empower the community to create firewise opportunities? Someone calls the firewise community, says pay at View Lake Estates, but we would really like to see Valley County all participate at that level. So that might be something to, in your.
Yeah, I'll email you for a contact.
Okay, sounds good.
The University of Idaho, they really wanted to have virtual classrooms in every county around the state. And so using extension as a resource to be able to figure out what that looks like in each county. A lot of the counties are getting those virtual classrooms in their office. In Valley County, I said, you know, we don't have enough space to actually hold a class in our office, like a virtual class. And so I asked if they could put the virtual classroom in the EOC. And we had some mixed communication of saying yes or no, or yes or no, and the answer is yes now. So we have the equipment. I'm working with the IT department and buildings and grounds to get that installed. But it will be in that, that lower classroom area and Sheriff. And, um, Sheriff Boland said that that works, and University of Idaho accesses that space for classes. Um, and rather than take over the projector area, it's just going to be off to the left, stage left or whatever, I think, I don't know if that's the actual stage left, but it'll be off to the side of the room, give people two different options for, um, connecting to technology in that space. And it should be pretty nice. It looks nice. Um, and so hopefully that will be out for some spring Victory Garden programs that I plan on reserving in that space. And 4-H is, um, up in enrollment. They have their after-school programs, and they have a large cloverbud group that they've been doing classes for, and the cloverbud group is like the, the youngest of all of them, yeah.
The most.
Yep. Um, and then this week I will be presenting at the Knocked Up New Year Virtual Half-Day Conference, and that's essentially, um, gearing up. It's the National Extension Educator Professional, Community Development Extension Professionals, Knocked Up. And, um, and they just want me to present on awards. And I try to submit at least one award per year, just because you can't get an award if you don't put your name in the hat. And so, um, I'll be presenting on, you know, what it's like to do, to do that. How do, why do I take those steps? What does it look like? And, and how can you be most successful? And then the other opportunity that I wanted to share is the We Can, which is the Western Community Action Team, which is Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming tri-state efforts for community development and community reviews. Um, they have an online virtual boot camp. It's called, it's like a community boot camp, and different communities can apply to be part of that. And then there's opportunities for coaching, um, education, and then some mini-grants is what they call them, and it's just kind of that, uh, community projects, that low-hanging fruit, those little things that you can get off the ground. And so last year, the West Central Mountains Leadership Academy applied for it. Um, it was, it was tough, because we were still in COVID, and so they wanted to meet in person, but people weren't meeting in person. And sometimes it was virtual, it's just like, oh, my gosh. Choose which way we want to go and go that way. So I don't know if that group is, is still active, but, um, I will reach out to them and follow up, because there was a, an opportunity for that group to apply for a mini-grant to, to implement their idea of, um, their activity they wanted to do for the Leadership Academy. And so that is all I have to report out. Do you have any questions?
Sounds like you're busy.
Oh, there's always things to say yes to. And, uh, and I like, I like saying yes, because there's a lot to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is Pat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Aren't you going to pull it down?
No, because Melissa's not all that much higher than her, taller than her. So I did get several applications over the weekend. Most of them were the building technician position. Did get one for the road department, that's promising, so we'll see. I got a detention one, but he disqualified himself because he, um, has participated in some illegal activities too recently. Let's see, um, CWI is having their law enforcement class, um, Career Day in February. And so I'll be going down with, um, Lieutenant LaCroix, couldn't think of his title, but Lieutenant LaCroix and somebody probably from Patrol as well. So we'll be doing that in February, and then the Boise State Career Fair is also in February. I have to sign up for that yet. Um, and then just a reminder that I'm gone next week. So the seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, I won't be here to do my reports on the twenty-third. Um, it, well, remote work on Wednesday and Thursday, just to kind of get myself back into the routine of things. But the sheriff's office has a class that they have asked me to teach, and so I need to come back on Friday, so I'll be here Friday, the twenty-seventh. So, um.
Oh, rude, guys, geez, interrupting her. Her vacation.
It's all right, it's not interrupting my vacation, I'm working then, but yeah. It's that jet lag that takes a while to get back into things. So that's what I have. Any questions? And I'll be meeting with you guys this afternoon.
How used are the building to take, tech, is that for Building Inspector Department or for Buildings and Grounds?
Building Inspector. Oh, it's that hybrid where it's administrative and, uh, learning how to inspect as well.
And have you interviewed that person? I mean, we, we don't know where we are yet, okay.
No, we just, uh, myself to train Annette on how to do it and Neil.
Do you ever want to be a road tech?
Well, I have a decent one. I don't really know what's going on with that road tech thing. I think it was construction slows down, maybe we'll get more. Um, we did hire somebody that's actually starting Wednesday. So that will help. Um, but we're still down two, so.
Are we behind on inspections in the county?
We're not behind in inspections. The road department is behind on two people.
Our superintendent and Jeff are snowing, patting.
They're doing all of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Pat? Sounds like you're rolling along.
Rolling along, yep.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Thompson, um, pretty short and sweet today. Uh, we're still, uh, beginning to roll out the computers to the departments. So that's kind of our, our big focus right now. Um, I did get an update from Zipley on the Ameritidal connection. They got the permit from ITD.
So they're going to drill under the highway?
They're gonna try to. They gave me a estimated completion date of, um, February third. It sounds like they're going to try and see if the dirt is soft enough to... I guess if you get your water hot enough, you'll be fine, you can drill through anything. Um, we have a, we have a, we actually have another solution for that, if it doesn't work out, that, um, I thought about here recently, so, um, we'll see how that goes. Um, continuing our bi-weekly meetings with Tyler to get that software going. I'm working on getting our data together for them, so that they can start looking at it and getting it converted and into the, the new software. Um, and then, um, continuing to get those phones worked for the sheriff's department. So that's the big things we want right now.
Did you get an iPad or something for him, or where are we on that?
Yes, I'm working on it today. I have your phone as, as well. I'm waiting on one thing from Verizon before I can finish setting it up, but, um, hopefully a few more days max, and I'm sure by next Monday.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Think we're good?
All right.
Thank you. Cinda.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we had a conditionally-used permit withdrawal for CUP twenty-two forty-nine, Morrell Glamping, and I want to reimburse them fifty dollars. And we did do some noticing and, and, um, use some of our time, so I don't want to give them the whole application back.
Is it two fifty for the fee, and you want to give them back fifty?
One fifty, and I want to give them back fifty.
Okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we.
It's not an action item, can we?
Yeah, it's on the space.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so I'll make the motion that we reimburse the Morrell Glamping site, CUP, fifty dollars.
A second.
Move the second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
So last week, Dorina, uh, Valley Soil Water Conservation District brought me a lot of information on the function of the Conservation District, and then their five-year Resource Conservation Business Plan. And I emailed those to you this morning.
Saw those.
You can look through that, won't go through it here. And the same with the planning zoning stats for last year. I mean, it's something you probably want to spend some time with, versus me just sitting here and reiterating those for you. And the snowmobile races due to the, the warm, soft snow at this point has been changed to January twenty-eighth, February eleventh, February eleventh, and a February twenty-fifth for this year. And that's those snowbike races out on Davis property.
Can you give me those dates again, please, Cinda?
January twenty-eighth, February eleventh, and February twenty-fifth.
Do you know when, when the carnival is?
Uh, that last week of January.
The twenty-seventh.
Then we're going to have some races first part of January, and they flip those over into February.
Okay.
That's really all I have to report. Do you have any questions?
Um, I'm just looking at your stats, but I want to go through them, so I'll talk to you later on the side.
Sure.
Looks like you guys are busy.
We are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, since we got a few more minutes left, I want to ask, uh, Mike or Kevin, do you guys want to come up and talk about anything or anything to report?
Still have Larry also.
We'll have Larry. Oh, sorry, Larry. Save the best for last. Come on up, Mike.
Uh, yeah, I do want to report, we just got our med card in, uh, through Diamond. We've submitted two, uh, prescription requests from Diamond Pharmacy. So that is streamlined, it's saved us headache time, uh, keeps boots in the ground in the jail. Um, we still are battling staffing shortages currently. I have two in background, but, um, maybe a third if, if they can get through the application process.
That's good news. I think that's going to save you guys a lot of road time. Minishaw time going to McCall to get pills, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, uh, it's a step in the right direction, so. And the med cart is, it's like the hospital uses, so it's state-of-the-art. Pretty neat, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to say thank you for that.
Good job. Kevin, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Uh, I could talk about one thing. As the sheriff said earlier, we have responded to two incidents with the Backcountry deputies on accidents. Um, both turned out decent, I mean, injuries, but the other thing is, we are going to, this Saturday, be down at the Smith Ferry Fun Run for the Cougar Mountain, for the Cougar Mountain Club. And we are going to do coffee with a cop down there, introduce the Backcountry deputies to some of the snowmobilers, so.
That's awesome. That's been a great program for you guys.
Yeah, it's working out good, so.
Kevin, did you have enough to equip with the right equipment on the search and rescue stuff?
So far we have, yeah.
Well, let us know if there's something that you.
There's a few things that we were short on, but we're in the process of getting those in, so. It's just small things that we didn't realize we needed, but now we do, so we'll have them.
Good. Just need a helicopter, it's all we have. Well, we're going to get Corvette for the commissioners first, and then the helicopter.
That's it, that's.
All right, thank you for sharing. So now we'll move to Larry.
Good morning.
Good morning, Larry, and you have a whole bunch of grants.
Not yet.
That's this afternoon.
Yeah.
What is it?
That's at one-thirty, if I remember right.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right, sorry.
Not a problem. So, uh, great weekend, we had a lot of people up here. Uh, it's interesting that Smith Ferry was packed. It has been the last couple of weekends, and in the past it hasn't been. Thing about Smith Ferry is we get a lot of the families coming up. And that's what we like seeing, is a lot of the younger people and getting families going, so. Thought I'd mention that. Also, um, the BFC, we had quite a conversation about, uh, fire and how there's going to be a lot of fire on the ground, prescribed fire on the ground next year. But at the same time, with, uh, uh, the whitebark pine being listed as a endangered, they've got to have a whole separate look at it now. They got to protect that whitebark pine. So we may have an issue on a lot of the treatment that we're trying to do around the county.
I think at one time, in the Rollus Commission, it was about five hundred and fifty thousand acres a year in the state of Idaho.
Oh, it's huge, yeah.
And most of it was in the Rollus area where, which is where the whitebark pine lives.
Yes.
So there's going to be some dramatic shifts.
Yeah, I got a call, uh, from them, I think I, I shared this with you before, that on, uh, one of our groom trails, there's a whitebark pine about twelve yards off the trail. And, uh, they want us to mark it and, uh, make sure we don't push any snow towards it, so. We're doing the best we can to save the whitebark pine. Um, last night, uh, amazing enough, Sunday, we had a, a, uh, Zoom meeting with State ATV Association and IDPR. Uh, IDPR has decided for the first time to push their own legislation on increasing, um, the, uh, vendor fees. And we kind of, as a group, never before has IDPR done this. It's always come from the users. And so the comment was made, um, that if it comes from IDPR, then it's a tax. If it comes from the users, then it's a user fee. And we'd prefer that IDPR did not push their own legislation. Uh, it's, so it's going to be a little controversial. We're working, we're going to work together, and hopefully, um, we'll get it worked out. Uh, Brush Creek, looks like Brush Creek is not going to be open this year at all, because they can't get the bridge in, uh, uh, East, uh, East Fork, or Eastlake Drive, or Eastside Drive, which is really disappointing. I've gotten a lot of comments over that. I'm, I'm surprised we pulled the bridge if we're going to work on it in the winter, you know? Um, other than that, things are going well. I got the guys up right now changing the exhaust manifold on a Piston Bulli. We rewelded the wing on the pre-noff last week. So by the end of today, everything's going to be up and running again for, get ready. We've got a lot of stuff coming up. We got to get over to Warm Lake for that new dog sled race over there, and then we've got the big dog sled race coming up. Um, we've got to connect Cascade to, um, Smith Ferry, and that's always a, a big project for us. Any, any questions?
So is the new groomer here? Do you know when it's going to be here?
No. I was told last week, parts showed up, but they haven't gone through the parts to see if they're the ones they need. They'll try to look at it this week and possibly bring a new groomer up next week. But no, there's no commitment.
Where does it come out of? Where's it come from?
Logan.
Logan?
Yeah. It's, it's, you know, like everything else, it's a supply chain issue is what I'm hearing, so. But we're doing the best we can, we're keeping everything running. That one groomer we've got, it's got over five thousand hours on it, and that's, uh, it's actually running pretty darn well. I shouldn't say that, sorry.
Got to knock it out right now.
It's running horrible. Any other questions?
Is that a brand-new groomer that's coming in, or?
Yes.
Is a new one?
Uh, it's a new Piston Bulli with a, uh, a, a brand-new tiller on it, which we've flaved that tiller before, and it's pretty amazing. It, uh, really helps us keep those trails up a little longer. And, and I'll be honest with you, it's kind of, considering the weather we've had, the comments I'm getting from people are those trails, other than when we got the six inches or four inches of rain, trails are really holding up nicely. Um, and that's just our guys. We got great guys out there, you know? These guys not only, I could go into detail, but these guys not only groom, which takes a year to two years to master, um, they do maintenance, they, uh, we pull final drives up on the, up on the trails, and, and we don't have mechanics. We are the mechanics, and, uh, it's just, I couldn't be more proud of the crew we got. It's, it's a lot of fun working with them, too. And we got a young guy. That's almost scary.
Good for you. Oh, wait, what's young, Larry?
I think he's twenty-two.
Oh, wow!
That is young.
That is awesome. That's really good. Just clarifying, it wasn't.
Oh, no, anything under, anything under seventy-five is young.
That's true. Good point.
Yeah, do I hear a second?
You have a second.
Any other questions?
Nope, looking forward to talking this afternoon on the committee and the advisory committee and.
Then we'll hit those grants and, and keep rolling.
That's good.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Klingon. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Thompson. Yeah, we'll start off with our favorite subject, the Baylor. Still doesn't work. Um, he thought he'd be up Friday or Saturday to put the part in, and obviously didn't make it. And left him a voicemail, and so I don't know. It's, uh, he believes it's a motor starter. He was up and did look at it, thought all electric eyes and switches were in proper working order. Um, and he got the starter part in. When I talked to him last week, he thought he'd make it up Friday, possibly Saturday. I talked to Steve, um, the tenant there, uh, noon on Saturday, and he hadn't shown, so.
You know what part it is?
It's a motor starter. It's part of electronics inside in the panel.
Okay.
And, um, um, I think at this point, we're just going to close it. Um, though we definitely have it up and running, we can't store any more stuff.
On that, so I had responded to a constituent, because she was putting out there, we were closed. And I said, no, we're only closed cardboard. Well, I got that, come, came back at me pretty hard.
Yeah.
Um, let's be careful about making sure we have the correct information and, you know, if we're gonna close it, let's just close it and get word out.
Yeah, um, till it's running, because they, we, we can't take anything more, anything we're gonna have to go up and, because we can't just bring in open top bins and start throwing it in there, because, uh, they had, the weather, if it's summer, we probably could, but, uh, with winter here, we can't really.
So Scott, is there a plan B to get the guy up that leases them?
I, you know, I talked, I've talked to, he doesn't actually lease them, at least, um, recycle balers, you know, he, his thing is he's into, and what Westpac was really big into down the valley was the cardboard compactors, um, for the businesses, was their, is their main thing. I don't know what's happened to Westpac, heard they got bought out, but they don't respond to myself or to, um, Lake Shore even. And they're a big outfit. I talked with Wesco over in Portland, that's what, talked to about buying a new baler, talked with Brandon there. Um, trying to see if they had anybody come over, he did give me the name of a roving mechanic out of Mon, out of Washington, but that would be huge to have them come. This Jim West with Clearwater, he owns Clearwater Equipment out of Eagle, he's kind of taken over filling in the gap, I mean, he has rental equipments, but again, his rental stuff is more for cardboard, you know, at businesses, not, not recycle balers.
Isn't a baler as big as ours?
They're more, they're more along, they're roll-offs as long, more is what they're like, like you see behind Albertson's and stuff, is what they, um, what they specialize in, I mean, Westpac, I talked with Mitch, because at Plexus, they had a rental from Westpac there, um, for cardboard. They come and haul it off and everything else, it's kind of a package deal they do. And so I don't know where, if they take it to a recycler, if they take it to the dump, um, what they're, what they did with it.
I was Lake Shore trying to help you solve this issue. Is this all on you?
So far. I mean, I, I, I talked to them, they gave me the name of, of Wesco over in, in, um, Wash, or Portland, is where they're out of, um, tried to find equipment or someone to come work on it. And then I did have talked with Brandon about rentals. Most people that rent equipment want to do it like in a 60-month rental. They don't want to do it for like a year to two years, year and a half. They like to do long-term. They don't really do it or have equipment to do it, they did give me two names of people, but they're, one's in Texas and one's in the Midwest. So, it's either that or look at replacing that baler.
You're saying Westpac is not even corresponding with you, I don't even know how we're gonna do that?
What's that?
How are we gonna do that if you're not getting any callbacks or anything from Westpac?
Well, this is to Wesco, is what they're, yeah, and they're out of Portland.
We can buy one through Wesco.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So, it's, uh, like I say, at this point, I'd like to get ahold of McKinsey and, uh, Max is waiting to hear from me from the paper on the status and just close it, until we can, uh, definitely have something operational there.
Dang it.
So there's no, uh, there's no outfit out there that in my mind, you could lease it and they'd take care of the upkeep of it?
Well, that's what, um, kind of, that's kind of what Westpac did with, um, with the cardboard stuff down in the valley, um, that was kind of their specialty, um. Like I said, so Mitch said at Plexus, they, they would rent, like the piece of equipment, you see behind Albertson's there, that's what they would rent, and then come haul it off when it was full. But there's no one locally here, um, Clearwater, he's more into the same thing, he's not into recycle balers um, that much, he knows how to work on them. Back when I called him, he says, you got that old worn out piece of thing up there, don't you? And I said, yeah. So he knows of it, it's got, it's famous, I guess. Um, because it's got over 7,000 hours on it.
So Doug, we were to buy a new baler right now, and Scott has it in his carryover budget, do we have to reopen the budget to allocate those funds? It might be something, why don't you get some bids?
Okay.
You know, what's it gonna take to just replace the thing and move forward? The community is not gonna stand for us keeping this closed for very long.
Yeah.
Um, nor should they.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got to find a solution for it. I don't know what your thought is.
Well, I think that's a great idea, um, I guess my thing about, like, the balers behind Albertson's, are they too small, can you use them for aluminum and and paper too, or are they strictly just for cardboard?
I think like the largest ones back there is our, our, you know, because they, with all the boxing and stuff they bring in, how they generate a huge amount of, you know, cardboard and stuff, um, you'd have to talk, you know, they, um, and they have their solid waste, you know, that, um, Lake Shore hauls off, so.
Well, it might pay you to talk to them and see, you know, what, what would it take to lease one for a year with a balloon on the second year or something like that? But we gotta, like, seriously, we gotta find a solution somewhere.
Yeah, because, um, and I trouble, I think what we're running to, like with the gentleman out of Eagle, he's kind of filling in the gaps, and now he's, you know, totally buried trying to, and this Wesco out of Portland works with him. Um, they used to work with Westpac, and they're the same thing, they're not getting much communication, they said, from him. So I don't know what's going on, what happened to him, or.
I wonder if Scott Carnes could help us, he's over in Portland now.
Yeah.
I'll give him a call and see if he maybe knows somebody that has something.
Well, I talked, well, I talked to, not Terry, but the, the gentleman, he's, would actually would be Scott's supervisor now, uh, Mike, or, yeah, I've got their names over there, but he's, uh, the one I contacted for looking for help for that, and he's the one that gave me, like I say, Wes, Wesco out of Portland and stuff.
I haven't worked in this as much out, but didn't, didn't Lake Shore pay for half the baler? You know, is, did we pay for it and then they helped fix it every other time?
They've been helping, you know, they helped, um, with the belt replacement and that kind of helped with, you know, repairs here and there. Last year's repairs, we did with all the hydraulic pump and rebuild, and we, we paid for all of it, it is our piece of equipment.
Now I think Lake Shore provides a skid steer.
Yeah, they have a skid steer down there, it has a claw, and it's like pick potatoes up and move it around and stuff, I think it's all part of, you know, it's, um, of our monthly fee we pay in them for operations and running the, the, um, and they also range to have it hauled off and stuff.
I think it's interesting, because if you think about it, we're gonna buy a $500,000 piece of equipment and somebody else's employees are gonna run it.
Well, I think really what we need to do is, is like, Neil said, find something that's a lease where they maintain it, that would be the best.
That'd be the best thing, absolutely.
And I can talk to Brandon about that, like I said, they, they're not interested in doing a year and a half or two years till we build a new facility. Um, they said, you know, most of them are five years, 60 years, 62 months.
Why don't you get some bids, get us some ideas for next week?
Okay.
See if Lake Shore will help you out or don't.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Might, might find out availability, how long the time is.
That, you know, that was one of the things Brandon did bring up when I talked to him, they're out there ways for new ones, like everything else.
Guy from Eagles gotta come and help then.
Yeah.
Gotta find somebody to come and help.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, he's, he has the motor starter, and, um, and, uh, we were actually up looking out last week, you know, see if we can fix it, you know? But, uh, and we definitely, when he does come, want to be there, so we can, um, I did talk with Steve there, who's the tenant, uh, Wyatt, actually is the employee, Lake Shore employee, generally comes down and does the baling in the morning. He said he's been good about keeping electric eyes clean and the switches. There's one switch in there, I guess the bracket gets bent, gets out of alignment, they've been, you know, doing a pretty good job of trying to keep those things going. But when it starts getting into the computer program or the electronics part of it, then it's kind of out of our realm. Not anybody can just come get involved in it.
Well, for a three-phase motor like that, the guy doesn't want to just stick your fingers in there anymore, start poking around, so.
No.
Hey, keep working on it, let us know what we can do to help.
Okay, and other than that, we're just dealing with the snow and stuff, and we got a sanding truck now, we're up and going, so we can, we can sand our parking lots and things now, so.
I thought last week, that was awesome.
Yeah, so that's, uh, we do have that going and stuff, and, uh.
What are we doing with all the cardboard that's stacking up the transfer site?
It's one of the dumb.
Seven, get rid of it. Well, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I don't know. We put out a memo last week, uh, everybody hold it until further notice, but I thought it was only cardboard.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's everything.
Well, we've, you know, cardboard is, is our biggest thing, it comes, but we finally, we're running out of, you know, for, for paper, uh, colored paper, uh, some of our plastics, cans and aluminum, they're just, they've used up all the bins we have that are made for that.
Well, we've done everything we can, we just have to wait till we get either fixed or a new one. All we can do. There was a lot of years there that we collected from all the different towns and went right to the landfill because it was so polluted, so.
Yeah.
And people need to realize, this is a convenience, this is not part of our contract, we're trying to do this because it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
We don't control it.
I think we should, I mean, I, I think environmentally wise, we should be recycling and stuff.
Absolutely.
I also think it should have been something that the county should have had a private entity set up a recycle center, and shouldn't have got involved in it, because it's, it's, um.
Unfortunately, I don't know that that works either.
Yeah.
I mean, the friends of the recycling down in New Meadows ended up having to take everything out to the landfill and, you know, they lost their whole space, they couldn't find people to volunteer, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the long-term solution is, but it definitely needs to happen, I mean, we have to control our waste.
Yeah, I think so too, it's, but, you know, like, I don't know, we approached, you know, there's three or four recycling centers down in, privately owned in the valley, if anyone would be interested in opening a satellite site up here or something, because it's.
Reach out, you know, you know, somebody, you know, reach out, give, have them bring us a proposal.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be awesome.
Okay, and that's, that's all I have, you guys have any questions for me?
Um, have you had any luck yet on your, I don't know what you call it, but, uh, cell phone notifications on stuff breaking down, is that still in process, you know, the?
What?
Heat pumps and the fans and all that, where you're notified by phone?
I'm not, I guess I'm not quite understanding.
Remember we went out, I think it was 14 grand, to have that company come up and set up all that stuff on the heat pumps and the fans on.
Well, we're, we're in that, I mean, uh, Jeremy got some equipment in that he needs to install first, and then they're in the process of ordering the equipment that comes up or to.
So it's in process?
Yes, it is, yeah, because they're, they're kind of, kind of trying to coordinate it with, they've got work to do up at the school, um, at the same time, so, um, see if we, the, while they're up here doing control work there, we can get started on getting our controls on alarms and notifications on our, uh, heating side, or heating side right now. So, okay.
Can't think of anything else, anybody else have any more questions for Scott?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have about.
Oh, just one more thing, I'll probably be gone the rest of the week, um, after today. Uh, my mom's funeral's on Wednesday, so we're going down tomorrow to get, uh, things set up.
Sorry to hear that.
And then, um, probably, it's on Wednesday, and we'll probably come back on Thursday, so, maybe on Friday, but I will be probably gone most of the rest of the week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So we have about, uh, 18 minutes until our next agenda item, so we're gonna take a break, mute the mic, and.
There he is.
Perfect timing.
We're gonna go without you, but we'll wait.
Jeff's the important reporter. Okay, welcome back everybody, we're at eleven o'clock agenda item, um, Jeff, come on up, I'd say you got an action item, whatever you want to do first.
That kind of looked like you were old today, Jeff.
Oh, man.
Move all the time.
Grader's hurting my back.
So who is this? This Jeff McPadden?
I'm Jeff, how you doing Neil? Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you, good to meet you. Are you Kendall Louie?
The middle son.
Middle son?
Yep.
Oh.
Yep, none, none of us migrated very far from home.
Good to know.
I make, I migrated around Valley, that's about as far as I made it, so. Is that right? Four thousand eight hundred sixteen a lot. Yes. How many lots was Koi, Sinda? Eight. Or was there seven with one existing?
Yeah.
I didn't bring that with me.
This one's in, uh, the McCall impact area, um, but what the applicant has agreed to, and Jeff has agreed to, is, are those improvements um, under staff recommendations, which is improve visibility and install road signs, signs along both Koi Road and Chad Drive, um, and then share the road signs, and then slow signs will also be installed along Koi Road, and then improve the shoulders along those roads. Versus, um, giving us thirty-one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. It's easier for Jeff to have them actually do the work than him to have to go do the work.
So the signage and all that is going to eat up all of that money?
It'd be pretty close. Right name?
Uh, Corby Garrett.
Boy, I spoke with him on site up there, the signs are suggested through the city of McCall, um, share the road, the signage really didn't have nothing to do with me, that was the city of McCall's request, um, I have requested a two-foot compacted shoulder from the intersection of West Mountain and Wisdom all the way back to Boydston.
Oh, that's a pretty good chunk of road.
And that's probably going to eat up.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Oh, good, that's great.
It won't be paved, but at least they'll have a good shoulder there.
So he'll haul that material in and lay it out and then they'll blade it over and pack it?
Yes.
Is that how that works? Okay, yeah, that's going to ease a lot.
Then when we do get around to repaving that, we'll already have the width, we can just go in and mill the asphalt and lay it out and then pave right on top of it.
So Jeff, I'm not seeing it called out back to Boydston, improve the shoulders along these roads, which you've only addressed Koi and Chad. A lot of funds will allow for a minimum of two foot of shoulder outside the existing pavement by adding material to the existing shoulder and compacting, intend to begin the shoulder work along West Valley Road, continue to Wisdom Road, continue to Chad Drive, and lastly, improve shoulders along Koi Road. It doesn't say where he has to start.
If they have any money left, they're going to start at Boydston, just like you just read, go out West Valley, turn on Wisdom, and go until they're out of money.
So what about, if, if they don't do Koi Road, then that kind of messes up your paving deal, doesn't it?
No, Koi, Koi's got good, decent pavement on it.
It's still good, okay.
Um, the worst part is from Boydston to Koi.
Okay.
So if you had thirty-one thousand dollars to work with, could your guys accomplish that entire task? Because literally, I mean, he could go from Boyd. Let me finish my comment. Literally, he could go from Boydston and hit the corner, turning onto Wisdom and go, eh, I'm out of money. I mean, how are you gonna, this is so vague that I could see issues for you moving forward, being able to try and.
So, so the deal with any of those RDAs is, you know, I've talked to Brian about it and we're not going to leave them hanging, um, like if they do a paving project, they're going to want to do paving around their subdivision. Stretching out from their subdivision to where they run out of money, we will kick in from where they run out of money and tie them into a.
And that makes sense, so why start at Boydston? Why not do Koi and Chad and have him get out to Wisdom and do as much and then we.
There's nothing to do on Chad.
Okay.
It may be a hundred feet.
Okay, this is a test case, I live right there, you gotta know I'm going to be watching.
Koi's not that bad, it, it's, it's got shoulders on it, it just needs fixed.
Okay.
But Wisdom and West Valley are.
Those are a mess.
The edge of the asphalt is drop into the ditch.
Yeah.
Hey, so I need a motion into.
Do we want to reword that?
We, we can reword that to be specific about.
Where, where they start.
Stating. Anytime there's gray area, you are going to have issues, we have to be very precise so that they have a meeting of the mind with us on what their responsibility is.
Right.
Because if not, they're going to try and get out of it.
And that's, yeah, that's what I told Colby, but like you said, it's, it's not in writing, so.
Yeah, I would recommend we.
I'll have Jeff come tell me exactly what he just said.
Yeah.
And then I'd remind you that this is all voluntary, this is a negotiation with them, they continue to be voluntary.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But if we're going to negotiate, that's why I'm saying, we need to know, they need to know exactly what we're asking of them. And if we keep it too gray, then we don't have a good meeting of the minds, and then you get problems on both sides that conversation after.
Especially when it says, you know, continue to Chad Drive and lastly, approve shoulders along Koi, if you're saying both of those roads are okay, then shouldn't even be in there.
Koi's okay, I mean, it's a lot better than Wisdom and West Valley, but I'll go sit down with Sinda, if you guys want to approve it and we'll go back and revise it.
We'll approve it with a changeover. Hey, so I need a motion for that RD, for this RDA approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Koi Estates Road Development Agreement with amended changes as recommended.
A second. I'm just saying a little favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, what else you got?
Um, so we're talking about that area, the residents that live on Chad Drive, right before it goes into the city of McCall, down in that river district, whatever they call that down there.
Oregon Drive.
Oregon Drive, yeah, um, I did a speed study in there last year because they, they were saying the cars are speeding through there and wanted the speed limit dropped. I did a speed study, can't change the speed limit according to that speed study, we're still at twenty-five.
So, you want to leave it at twenty-five?
I gotta leave it at twenty-five, I can't lower it any farther because eighty-five percent of the. I gotta leave it at twenty-five. I can't lower it any farther, because eighty-five percent of the public's traveling twenty-six miles an hour, so.
And you've done everything that we can?
That's how you set a speed. I did put up some cautionary fifteens on a couple corners. They are wanting the flashing speed signs like we have on Warren Wagon Road, with just a ring.
So are they gonna pay for it?
They buy it, we install it, and then it becomes ours. I can't remember, I remember talking to somebody about it. I don't know if there was MOUs involved, or... They buy it, we install it, we program it, and it becomes ours. Just like the ones in Smith Ferry, the ones on Warren Wagon, the ones on Warren Lake Highway.
So I guess, you know, we're getting quite a few of these now, Jeff.
Well, there's gonna be more and more of them.
Where they're gonna start dying, and we're gonna have to replace them.
The sign itself won't die. It'll be the battery pack.
We own them?
Yes.
We own them?
Yes. But that's where I need to sit down with Oki and see how all this works. I mean, they're eighteen to two thousand dollars apiece.
So this is my input on that. So we're doing a master transportation study. I would think that we should be able to have a professional give us recommendations on where we need these kinda signs. I mean, I can see us becoming a community of flashing signs. And because everybody wants what they want, and it's like, you know, that's just... To me, we're the professionals. You should know if a sign is needed there. You can get input, you can do your traffic studies. Obviously, it's not that big of an issue if you did the traffic study and people are abiding by the speed limit.
I walked that section, I walked that section, and the fifteen percent that weren't doing twenty-five, they were probably doing forty-five. Scary.
It's going downhill.
And most of, almost every one of those cars went down Morgan Drive.
I just think that we're becoming a community of flashing signs, and I mean, my gosh, it's, at what point do you say stop?
Limiting how many per road or per section or something that way. Because eventually, we're gonna have to start replacing some of these.
Well, you know, I feel like, if anything, it oughta be Jeff's call, not this community saying, hey, I'd like... I'd rather be some... He's more on your end of this show, saying, hey, I think we might need one here. And that's where I put my weight.
A lot of it comes down to patrol deputies, but they don't have... They can't go put patrols up every time there's a complaint.
You get numerous and you get wrecks, then that brings an attention to it. You know, you don't wanna have a wreck fight.
Right.
It just, we need a greater conversation around this and speed bumps. And as part of that master transportation plan, we don't, but the community does. So as we do this, as we do this master transportation plan, we should be able to identify certain areas that need to be addressed with different speed mechanisms. And get an engineer to look at that. That's my input.
Well, it's, to me, it's if a community like a subdivision wants this.
Yeah.
You own them, you take care of them, it's theirs.
I mean, if that's what you wanna do, but the thing is, they're installing them on our right-of-way.
Yeah, you can't. That's true.
And then that, that kinda throws a kink in it.
Good point.
So...
And when that happens, we become reliable for anything that happens, because of anything that a subdivision has done. I mean, if we're gonna do anything in our roadway, I believe it should be us doing it as the professionals. You can take input, but you are the professional, and we have an engineer for a reason. And I think we need input, but then I think that final decision needs to be done by somebody that actually is, has the capacity and the engineering stamp behind it, in my opinion.
It has to warrant it. That's what my thought is.
I mean, my speed, my speed studies show exactly that. They show eighty-five percent doing twenty-six to thirty miles an hour, and the other fifteen percent doing forty to fifty-two.
Check and see how old those people were, the demographics, if they're men or women.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. But you may, you know, if you get enough of them in one spot, you know, tell the sheriff and put a patrol out there. I mean...
It's not up to me to call them.
No.
Well, but it is up to us to inform. We have an area here that may need, you know, some attention.
Well, I call the sheriff's office, and then they say they want the RP to make the calls. You don't wanna come in from me.
A reporting party?
Yeah. Yeah, because after it comes through, this has happened in the past. People call... I call the sheriff's office, see all those people speeding out here, and like, well, who... Who are we doing this for?
Oh, got it.
Yeah, they want, just like accidents, and people parked in the roadway, people pushing snow in the road. The RP's called the office, we call the sheriff's office, sheriff's office sends somebody out. I haven't laid my eyes on it, I'm just going off of what this person said, so they want, they want direct contact with the reporting parties.
I'm just wondering, Jeff, Neil kinda made a point that piqued my interest, is that we let the folks that live on the road buy it and then not put it into county right-of-way, put it on one of their own private ground. It's theirs. If it quits, if it falls down, or wherever, there are the ones that maintain it.
The seventy-foot right-of-way, you put that sign thirty-six, thirty-six feet off the center of the road, you can't, it's down in the creek bottom or up on the hill. I don't know if those warning signs I put up did any good, but that's, we can do that legally without consulting anybody. That's why I brought it up to you guys, to, I mean, I told this lady I was gonna get back to her, because I knew we talked about it.
I think it should be your call. I'm just concerned about, you know, three or four years from now, we're gonna be buying a bunch of batteries for all these things. So we're gonna start rotting and falling over.
The posts are one thing, that's just normal, any of our signs.
Those still last up here real long.
The three big ones up on Warren Wagon. Got a big, heavy snow two winters ago. Plow went by, broke every one of them off. Springtime rolled around, it's like, where'd the signs go? I don't know, I haven't seen them all winter. I started watching, had the guys watching, and they started melting out, and they were under six feet of snow. Got them out, set them in the sun, started working again. They've been shot by shotguns, they get run over by cars.
I just...
Oh, yeah.
I'm not in favor of having signs all over the community myself, but... You know what, and so Morgan Drive, they have a strong HOA down there. They need to send out a letter to their people that live within that HOA. And, um, slow down.
Well, even if the thing does quit down the road, X amount of years, doesn't mean we have to put a new one back up.
But they'll hold us to it, it's just like us doing the old...
Have to buy us another one, then.
It's like us doing the homeowner assist paving. That's why we had to do Nob Hill, that's why we had to do Wild Goose, because they paid for it to begin with, fell apart, we had to pay to repaint it. Signs are gonna be the same way.
You don't think they would replace them if they get stolen or broken or whatever?
Doubt it. I mean, I...
If they're ours, we may get...
I mean, Oki could probably back me up on this, but they're in our right-of-way, they're ours.
Yeah, I think that's a valid, valid point. And we don't have to maintain them if we don't want them.
I mean, I can talk to Cody about it and see if he wants to do a little work on it for parametrics, see, see what his thoughts are. I could tell him exactly where it's gonna go, showing my traffic counter, speed study, and if he wanted to come from somebody between me and you guys, and that'd be parametrics.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to pay for a lot of that. It's gonna be hourly.
You know, find out what's working in other areas. Are these signs really effective, going into subdivisions?
Proven to be effective.
No, you have.
That in the city of McCall?
Yeah, Lick Creek.
City of McCall doesn't like anything flashing.
No, but they put them up.
Cindy.
They got them up on Lick Creek.
Yeah, the flashing light signs, I get complaints on, because they go in people's bedrooms, like, I mean, it's, as long as they're not flashing, I don't think planning a zoning wouldn't care, but the lighted ones are intrusive.
The only flash when the radar hits them.
Unless they break and continue to flash.
I just went out and unplugged them, so nobody, everybody quit complaining about them now.
Not in favor of signs everywhere.
And I talked to the sign manufacturer, they're, they're gonna help me get them fixed. They had bad batch radars that were malfunctioning. But it started snowing, and I couldn't do anything else to them, so I just went out on Warren Lake Highway and crawled up on a ladder and unplugged them. So I mean, that's something I can look at, is do they make a dimmable version that, you know?
I don't care that they flash. What they do, that's how you get people's attention.
That's just it. I mean, there's a lot of people moving up here that just, they don't care. Highway's the same thing. I mean, all these ones on the highway, Cascade, Donley, McCall, those don't belong to ITD, those are, those are the cities. Just like Smith Ferry, those aren't the states, those are ours.
There's one down at Bikini Beach there, just below banks, on a yellow sign that talks about speed.
Advisory.
Advisory only, and it's like...
It's advisory. They can't write you a ticket for, the last speed limit sign was fifty-five, so, but it, I don't know.
So where would you place it, Jeff? I mean, most impactful is right as you hit Wisdom, right onto Chad Coy intersection.
It would be right at, because the Chad Loop people are paying for it, and the speeders were... Most of them were in the danger section between the two Chad Loop entrances onto Chad Drive. There's kind of a big, wide, sweeping corner, and then you dive off down Morgan. You just come around that corner, it's just like, whoa. You hear them coming way back, and you step back, and I'm out there in this coat, they don't... Don't care.
Deer crossing sign, that'd have flown down.
No, they won't get a...
That's fair hunting, are you kidding?
All that does is make the deer cross in a bad spot.
This is not an action item, so.
No, but I think it's something... I wanted to bring that up, let you know, and I told the lady I was gonna get back to her after I discussed it with you guys, so.
My concern is like what Cindy brought up, is that I'm the guy that's next to the flashing sign that I gotta look at through my bedroom window at two o'clock.
I mean, that's something we can look at. We can place those in different spots. So there is no house that's gonna get a flash.
I would be out there the next day taking it down.
That's why they're getting shot with guns.
They'd be rolling with the shotgun.
None of ours have been shot by shotgun, but the manufacturer sent me some pictures of one that been run over by a drunk driver on a sharp ninety, and they went out there to put it back up and put it back up. Next weekend, they sent a guy out to check, make sure it was still working, and somebody had hit it two or three times with a shotgun. Still flashing.
Still working, man.
I'll check with Cody and see, see if he's got any recommendations on anything like this. I mean, I agree with everything everybody's saying. I mean, I wouldn't want one of those things flashing in my window, and the folks out on Warren Lake Highway, it got to be, when it wouldn't shut off. When a car hits it, it flashes for five seconds and it shuts off.
Well, we have a night sky ordinance. I mean, how do these meet a night sky ordinance, or do they, or, you know, what's the disruption there? I don't know. Give us an update on the East Side Bridge. What's going on with the East Side Bridge?
Uh, they're starting on the covert today. Week and a half, they'll have the covert done, and hopefully, we'll have some good weather right around into this month, and we'll get the girders up here.
So they've done the, I wanna say...
All the buttments are done.
Yeah, buttments, yeah.
They didn't wanna do the covert, because the girders have to come in off of Warren Wagon Road. And they didn't wanna, the timing is just so close on getting, getting the crane up here, getting the girders up here. They gotta get a three-hundred-and-twenty-six-ton crane out East Side Drive, and it's twelve feet wide. They said even getting it through the city of McCall, through Spring Mountain Boulevard, those roads, it's gonna be tight.
My goodness.
They doing it at nighttime?
No, they'll do it during the day. They'll just have a lot of flaggers with them, trying to control the intersections and...
Who's grooming East Side to that wide?
Huh?
Who's grooming East Side that wide?
Grooming it?
Well, I mean, there's snow on it. I mean, are we, there...
Oh, not sure who they're, so Don Hockels plow out to their place. And it gets full width, the road, and then from there out, they hired a contractor, I'm not sure who it was. Keep the rest of that open, and they've got permission from the park to use the North Beach parking area, goes in and makes a loop. They got permission to plow that out and get it wide enough for the... They got five semi-loads of counterweight coming also, that have to go out East Side Drive for that crane.
Which bridge is it they're replacing?
One that crosses a river at the north end of the lake.
Replacing that one?
Yeah, it hasn't been there since about September seventh.
Oh, my goodness. Tell you how long I haven't been there.
It was up there this time of year. Larry had said that there was gonna be no Brush Creek, probably parking lot this year because of this bridge. Is that probably a good call?
They've been plowing it all winter?
No, I think that was more the trail stuff.
Oh, the trail. The trail won't make the loop, no.
Yeah.
No, they can't, yeah, because there's no bridge there.
Gets across the river.
Okay.
And they, their original, their original opening date was January twenty-seventh or something like that. And everything was going real well. They revamped the schedule, and it was December twenty-seventh. Bad weather hit.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, it's all weather-related, and those girders are a hundred and, a hundred and twenty feet long. They've got a rear steer, they've got the little guy sitting this far off the ground in the back steering it, so just picture something a hundred and twenty feet long coming up Goose Creek. With all that weight, trying to pull that girder around the corners, I mean, he's...
Bringing it up Goose Creek.
Yeah.
I wonder...
Lot better than bringing it up fifty-five across the Rainbow Bridge.
That's probably true.
Way to get it there, but bring it with a helicopter.
Uh, too heavy.
Crazy.
We need to take that bridge part to the S Bridge and just...
Yeah. That's gonna be a fifteen-hundred-foot-long bridge. Yeah.
They won't let us fill the lake anymore, will they?
Nope. Hopefully, they let us leave the old bridge there, just for a fishing bridge.
Yeah.
That's really good fishing right there. Okay, I'll get back to that lady. I was on my striping company a good part of last summer to get West Roseberry, West Mountain, Elo Farm to Market striped. Ends up being the guy that was, I was dealing with, doesn't work there anymore. Nobody told me. So I got ahold of the new guy. I'm already on schedule to get all that done this coming year. It's gonna be about twice as much as I budgeted, but no big deal. I got it covered.
I just saw a new striping deal that's, at nighttime, it glows, so you can see the sides of the roadway.
It's called the Fog Line.
Wonder how much more that is?
I'm getting it.
Oh, you are?
I don't think they can use the old paint anymore. I think it's all got glow.
It's all gone.
Well, it's amazing to me how much the salt is eating that off on the highway, even the new construction. You can hardly even see the line.
That's the worst, because it's not chip sealed, so the paint's sitting on a smooth surface, and the plow just chews it off.
Chews right up.
You got a chip seal, you got depth, and the paint stays down in between the rocks. A lot of it depends on how many, how much glass particles they add to the paint. Just their stripings, that's your reflectivities, how much glass beads they put in it.
That's awesome.
Everybody went, hmm. That's why West Roseberry doesn't have any striping left on it, because it's just smooth. Drive down Old State Highway south of Daystar, on the section that goes to the BOR, there's still striping there from the sixties. Get out and lick it, and it's probably got lead. That's probably why it's there so long.
How often do you lick that kinda stuff, Jeff?
Well, that's what's wrong with you, Jeff.
There's a lot of things wrong with me. I played with mercury when I was a kid, too.
Yeah, I did, too. We all did that.
Drink out of a garden hose, you know?
We are awake. That was a test, right?
Yeah. Got a new employee starting Wednesday. All the vehicles I got ordered. We're just waiting on a timeline to see how long it's gonna take. We're just waiting on a timeline to see how long it's gonna take. Um, I did purchase a Jeep Grand Cherokee from Cascade Auto. That will replace the white Durango and motor pool. And I think Pete is advising to put that white Durango for I T. And we'll surplus the I T vehicle. So we're, that thing's getting some electrical gremlins in it.
Which vehicle's I T's now?
Uh, it's that old Explorer, that tan colored one. And we had a sister one to that and we surplus it. Five or six years ago. Doesn't get drove enough. It.
Did Tony's get put back together again? Did Tony's get put back together again?
Yeah, Pete was waiting for one more thing, I think. It was just. It was old age, but then again, it was, the metal brake line was rubbing on a. A line protector above the rear axle and it just wore a hole in the brake line. It's still running pretty good, but mileage wise it needs to go away. He's got a new pickup coming.
Do we have a process where we sell off these old?
I auction them off online through a government site.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a surplus auction.
And, and we're, none of us are allowed to bid on those, you know, just so you know.
Anybody can. Yeah, you can get on gov deals and bid on them.
Oh, that's right. We changed that, didn't we? Before we couldn't, employees couldn't bid on them and now that's all different because we went through a company.
Oh, no, when we put them out for silent auction down at the road department, we had many employees buying them. But it was still, everything was still sealed, so it didn't matter. There was, nobody knew what anybody was bidding. But this is a lot easier. All I gotta do is take about eight pictures of the vehicle. Description, send it off to gov deals. They throw it on there for two weeks and four weeks later I get a check in the mail.
We discovered a hole in a process and I don't, I don't know what that process looks like, but. So when somebody breaks down, Jeff goes and gets the vehicle, but there is no one to go and pick up that employee and bring him back to the county. And so we probably need some kind of a process. I went and picked up Tony the other day over at Tamrac.
Should be a department head.
That's what I thought it was. It was a department head.
But, and that was the only one in hers, so she would have closed her department. So it's kind of, you know, is that, that may be the best course. I don't know.
That's how, we had this discussion back and we decided to let the department heads save their employees. And sure, she might have to close the office for a couple hours and get somebody, but that's understandable.
I mean, that, that, I'm not making a call on that. If that's what you guys wanna do, I mean, I, we were. All of my crew had been out plowing since one o'clock in the morning and we were all gone and.
I know. That was fine.
Mechanics were busy and.
I just didn't know what the policy was and I don't think anybody knew what the policy was, so we may need to write one so that we actually have it somewhere.
Should go to department heads and then if they have issues.
I'll share.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll share.
I mean, there's a good, a good chance a sheriff's deputy might be in the area. You go, but then again, you go pick an employee up and then get a call in the middle of it and then. You gotta kick the other employee out while you go. Deal with the domestic or whatever, so that's probably not the best deal there either. Equipment. Getting new equipment's like pulling teeth right now. I've been bugging, we, we've got our old road grader we were gonna trade in in October, November. Just talked to the salesman the other day and he goes, yeah, you might get it by the end of this summer.
Could I have put your order in now?
I put it in in.
Okay.
I put it in in July.
I noticed the other day there's a lot of new excavators at Cat and Cisco and all those places now.
There's a few other, some, road graders and dozers are very, very hard to get your name on one right now. Excavators, loaders, some of that other stuff that's, order it, you'll have it in six weeks. But yeah, this road grader, the road graders are made in the United States. A lot of the parts come from overseas or over the border or something, but. Most of it's in the United States and they just. He doesn't know why, but.
They're fast enough.
Might have it this summer sometime. Other than that, I think. Um, I had a question on here for Doug. Did the Smith Ferry H O A? Pay us, we are, they have totally paid out for those signs?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't put the southbound one up yet because I T D has not put their permanent sign up yet.
That homeowner association did make their contribution directly to the county.
Okay.
I can give you a date if you would like, Jeff.
I did pick up a used pickup the other day from Southern Idaho Timber in McCall. Big heavy duty one that we can put a dump bed on since our other ones are three hundred thousand miles plus on them.
Um, if you want, you can go right into the master transportation plan. That's our next agenda item. That, that contract.
Okay.
You have it with you?
No.
Or is that Cinder? Because it's, the contract came in about fifty thousand dollars to do.
Oh, oh, I did see that, but I, I didn't ask to put it on the agenda. I'm not sure who did.
Oh, well, maybe it was you, Cinder.
Wasn't me.
And this is an action item.
I put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Jeff had sent it to me to put it on the ERTA. Approved and I just added it to the agenda so we could actually have an action.
Yeah, so when Cody was up here, we sat down and kinda had that round table and you guys agreed to go above and over that thirty thousand that the grant was for.
Right.
Over twenty thousand over that and I guess we've gotta decide who's paying for that. Is it gonna be me or?
I'm gonna assume.
Geez, thanks.
It's co, it's for your department.
I'll just take it out of professional services.
We could take it out of Cinder's, but I don't think she'd like it.
The extra twenty? I thought we said we were gonna take it out of Pilt.
Did we?
We've talked about it, but I can't remember.
We said, we were gonna take it out of Pilt.
No, I think you're right. I think we said we'd go another twenty thousand out of Pilt. Yeah, I think you're right.
Sherry's right.
Wait, can I record it?
Yes.
I get my phone.
Hey, go ahead. Turn it on. You ready? Sherry is right. We're gonna take it out of Pilt.
That's the only time I've ever heard that.
So then I need a motion to approve that contract. And I guess my only question, Jeff, before we get that far is, is they're gonna do everything that you want them to do? Did we get it all in here?
Everything you guys wanted them to do, extra, the public meetings and stuff? Yes, that's, that's all listed in here.
That's all in here?
Yep.
So that fifty thousand is for what?
So we're gonna do a master transportation plan. So what they will do is they'll go out and look at transportation flow throughout the county.
Right.
And creates, um, we want them to upgrade some of the existing roadways that are minor collectors into major collectors because then we can get federal grant money. And then also look at long-term strategies to try and move people more efficiently around the county.
Is this gonna be like a, organizations doing that or is this Jeff doing this?
It's an engineer. Parametrics is the county's engineering firm for the road department.
Oh, okay.
Over my head.
And really honestly, the, the meat of it is that if you, you don't qualify for grants if you don't have a master transportation plan.
Right.
They won't even let you look at the grants, so that's the main reason why we're doing this.
We have to have that in place to be able to go forward.
And we want the cities to participate also. So that, you know, we have good flow in and out of the communities also. All the growth, we probably need to pave West Mountain Road. But what is that, Jeff? Probably a hundred million bucks to do that.
Let's get a bridge first.
Well, you seen what it costs to do five and a half miles last year.
And the bridge is on our agenda to do. That will be called out. But, and for, and with the S Bridge, well, we can talk about that cause I'm sure it's gonna come up this afternoon, but. That has not been rated so that federal funding can actually be used to replace that at this point, correct?
Right. Once they, once they rate poor, every two years I get, I've got seventy-eight bridges. On I T D's radar that they inspect every two years. That one still rates good. But in my mind, it's functionally obsolete.
So you, it's more of a rating of not just so much the structural soundness of the bridge, but. Like all the accidents you always hear always on that bridge, you know, the narrowness of it, it's, that's all in that rating?
No. No, they don't. They don't look at that. They're just looking at the superstructure.
That's it.
And the deck. If it's on a blind corner, it, on a blind corner.
They don't care.
Sherry brought up, I mean, I've talked to parametrics about it. Extending those curbs out, you know, about ten feet. Just so people don't hit that abrupt curb. But is that gonna cause people to? Hit, shoot to the other lane? I, I don't know. There's no simple.
Yeah, no good answer.
And that's part of the structure those curbs are. So it's. It, it's, it's on our radar pretty hard right now.
Explains a lot, then.
Um, the Smith Ferry Bridge just got on my radar here a month or so ago. Um, it's got some structural issues.
We actually spent money coming in with some rock, if I remember right, underneath the abutments on one side.
We did a huge repair underneath that on one of the piers.
Washing away.
Six, seven years ago.
Yep.
But now there's more. LTAC has advised me to start going after some federal funding to get that replaced.
And then we're gonna make that a wider bridge too, I hope.
Two lane, it'll be just as wide as everything else we're putting in, thirty-six feet wide. But one thing good about where that one is, they can put the new, half the new bridge right where the old, old bridge used to be. Get cars on that and then remove the old bridge and put the other half there. Otherwise, those people are landlocked over there.
You're not talking about the Rainbow Bridge. You're talking to something else.
Uh, this is the one that crosses the river at Smith Ferry. Goes over to.
Oh, Smith Ferry, that one.
Yep.
So anything on fifty-five is I T D?
Yep. And that's, most of my bridges are sixties era. Got a few in the seventies. Big, the big bridges are, most of them seem to be in the late fifties. Mid-sixties in that area somewhere.
Okay, well, let's get back to this action item, this contract. Everybody's good with it. I need a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Parametrics Master Transportation Plan Contract.
There's nothing to sign on it.
All right, second that. Let me say in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Grader that you wanna replace, is that the one up in Lake Fork?
That's our oldest John Deere we have.
And so will be all cat leases, right?
No, we've paid two of the cats off already.
Oh, so we own those now?
I'm running, it'll be the last deer. Yep. Doesn't seem to be much wrong with it. Hold on to that thing, couple more years probably. We just made the last payments on our two Kenworths through Pacar. Uh, just made the last payment on. One of the other road graders and that'll roll right over into this new one we're supposed to be getting.
How many new vehicles do you think are gonna put through the C I P? Have you even worked on it at all yet?
No. I gotta get with Stanbaugh and Capery and. Cause we're. They're taking so long to outfit those now we've, I think we've got. Four. Patrol vehicles over a hundred and eighty thousand now.
The one with the eight we just got?
Oh, yeah, they're. They got one done.
We have eight, but only one we can use.
They were waiting on parts.
Waiting on decals.
I don't know if the sheriff said anything to you, but they. The place they were going through in Nampa was waiting on parts. One of the manufacturers of the lights and the sirens. Whelan, Whelan, however you pronounce it. Still can't get a commitment from them. Timeline. We get one every thirty days. We're gonna have all the other seven in the next. Hundred and eighty days. Couldn't get an answer. Dave got ahold of someplace in Salt Lake. And we'll kick one out every thirty days for you, so they all just went to Salt Lake a couple of weeks ago.
That's what they were transporting?
Yes. I actually jumped in fast enough on the. Sheriff's Office and Waterways vehicles I ordered. Instead of having them come to Mountain Home, they're going straight to that place in Salt Lake. Except for one, I didn't make it in time, but. Yeah.
There's a lot of job opportunities here in Idaho people could do. We just can't get anybody who wanna do it.
I don't know where everybody is.
Okay, anything else?
Other than that, I think that's, uh. About it. It's snowing again.
Supposed to get about five, six inches today. Five to six inches today.
Oh, good. Make it worthwhile to plow.
Awesome, yeah.
Yeah. Where, so far everything's.
I know what I wanted to ask you. Did you get that tanker of fuel from down below?
Supposed to have came Saturday and I haven't talked to Kelly yet. I, I just got done putting a road grader away and then I came straight up here. He was supposed to have come up Saturday and filled this tank up down here. Two dollars less a gallon.
Nice.
I thought.
And I think maybe we might wanna send them a bid form next time we bid fuel out. Although according to, we don't have a signed contract now.
We don't. United bid on it a couple of years ago. You probably remember, I don't know, I don't know if you were here or not. He didn't, we split the bid. United got the diesel, Diamond got the unleaded. Neither one of them liked that. United doesn't like our bid format, so that's why they didn't bid this year. I need to get that ironed out. Net Connell. Four phone calls and nobody's called me back. And they're out of Boise. They come, they go all the way to McCall. I don't know if it's on a weekly basis or not, but. Their Diamond. We ran out twice this year. Not good in the middle of winter. They, they keep us like right at. Anywhere from a foot and a half to three feet of fuel. It's a seven thousand gallon tank and they're keeping us right at about a thousand gallons, which is. Too much two days of hard plowing. We'll, we'll eat up a thousand gallons quick.
You're gonna start getting condensation in that tank if you don't fill it. You're gonna get rust and all that stuff.
No rust, it's concrete.
Oh, it's a concrete tank?
Yeah.
The one down at the road department? Thought that was a metal tank.
Metal on the outside.
Well, I didn't know it was concrete.
That's why we can put it above ground, cause it's double, double or triple walled and it's got four inch concrete.
Good to know.
Liner inside it. Otherwise you gotta put them in the ground.
Well, but it's still getting back to United, I think. Let's find out why they don't like our bid process and figure out how to fix that.
I'm gonna work on it.
Is that two dollars a gallon saving? That's a huge, that's worth it.
Five thousand gallons will save us.
Ten grand.
About ten grand.
Yep, let's do it. Is this something that we have to do on like a keep fill basis or you have to check the tank constantly?
Um, on the bid contract, um, it's not really a contract, we're just running through Diamond off the bid. They come by every day or every couple of days and we got dials on top of the tanks. Looks like a clock. Take the measurement and they know how much is there and. And they'll come the next day and give us. Three hundred gallons, five hundred gallons. Six hundred gallons. Now, when you're running seventeen pieces of equipment plowing snow. Thousand gallons don't last very long.
That's for sure. Okay.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good to meet you.
Welcome aboard. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
I've known you a long time, but I've just never met you.
You've heard a lot of good things about him.
Kinda like, I've known him a long time, but I didn't know him.
That's not really a bad thing or a good thing.
He knows me now. We wished he hadn't known me a long time.
I know Rob up at the ski hills, been knowing him a long.
The only one I really. Make sure they get extra snow in their driveway is the one on the end right there.
Truth. Okay, our last agenda item for the morning is an action item and this is the meeting minutes of January third. Did you get a chance to look at those?
I did. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would move to, um, approve the meeting minutes of January third.
Second.
Moved it second. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Well, that takes care of our morning agenda. At this time, we will recess and see everyone back here at one o'clock.